The Tuesday, June 21st, 2022 special meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 5:15 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem?
Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you.
Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening. Do we have a motion on this agenda? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the agenda with amend the agenda to add a staff presentation prior to the first public comment.
Thank you. So the presentation would be item one, consent would be two, and new business would be item three. Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Bonzel?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Any discussion? Mr. Hanley?
Can we clarify that we moved the agenda before or the presentation before public comment?
Correct.
Okay, because one was right there. Okay, just making sure that that's what we're doing.
Yep, moving. So it would be frivol agenda, announcements, presentation, number one, then public comment, then consent for number two, and then under new business, item three would be the city operating millage. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, I have no announcements this evening, so we will move on to our presentation regarding the city operating millage by our city staff. We'll start off with our city manager, Karen Kovacs. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a continued conversation that was started actually a year ago, almost a year ago, August of 2021, when we had first identified that there was going to be a significant deficit, and at that point it was around $6 million that staff had identified. And we had, we had been able to whittle that down to about a $2 million deficit. And while we did preliminary projections out for years beyond that, we've, we determined that it was approximately about a $2 million structural deficit. So that truly meant that revenues were not covering operating costs or operating revenues were not covering operating costs. So there is, there is a significant need in order to address that. So the common questions that we really have been hearing around this topic have been, how did we get here? And really, that's not a very easy or simple answer to, to, to provide. It's not one single thing that had brought us to this financial situation. It is a combination of many things, and of which one, major one though, is a change in our taxable value or our tax base. And that is due to losing a large taxpayer or a major taxpayer, and that would be We Energies. While the city had been known, had been aware of this decline and it was coming, they, we had done things in order to prepare for that, however, never really addressed the actual issue or replenishing that lost tax base. So the, the good part on this is the city did take, we did take, you know, certain measures in order to minimize an impact of immediate effect. And that came in the, in the form of one-time revenue sources, such as property sales, other special revenue sources such as grants, ARPA funding, things like that. So while we were able to see it on paper, that the budget was balancing, we were still using fund balance in order to plug that hole as well. So it's not one thing, it's a combination of things that has brought us to today and, and the need for an immediate revenue source, while also still addressing expenditures. Now, as I mentioned, there was a deficit identified about a year ago that was in the form of about $6 million, and staff had been able to work within the budget and whittle that down to about $2 million to use fund balance. Those adjustments, which are commonly referred back to, are really adjusting wage and overtime expenses, restructuring staff as much as possible, reconsidering filling positions within other departments, putting off one-time expenditures. Many of these were in the form of consulting services, which were future planning, such as performing a tourism impact study or feasibility study, and then other impact studies to other departments. We eliminated other contracts that were not necessary, and I think a significant one that you were aware of was our lobbying firm. We stopped subsidizing other funds or departments that relied on general fund subsidies and really only focused on the, the absolute necessary expenditures such as debt payments that were associated with other funds, and we'll get into that later. And we really delayed any other equipment purchases. And we're using ARPA funding in order to do that now. We, we talked about that with the fire truck recently and really using that to, to, to fund what's absolutely necessary and putting off any other unnecessary immediate purchases. And I say that very delicately because purchasing things or replacing equipment is part of an overall replacement schedule that has a long-term impact on the budget versus a direct impact. So. While we're still on the title slide here, we have a lot to cover and we're trying to keep this incredibly brief. So, so as we move on, if you go ahead and let's move on to the next slide. So here's kind of an overview of what we plan to cover in this, again, very brief presentation. Much of this information has been shared in other previous presentations or other public conversations with the commission. But the highlights here are really going over what the millage currently is, what the increase, the proposed increase is, and what that would total, covering our revenues that we do have and things that we are in control of, the review of the expenditures. We'll go through some of those community concerns or FAQs that we have been hearing previous to this conversation, but also as we continue this conversation, and then really focusing on that resident impact and what that means for our taxpayers. So here, here you see our current operating millage is 14.9225, and that has remained fairly unchanged for over 10 years. And actually, it has remained unchanged for over 10 years. The only other time that it was really increased was to address some, a capital project, and it was increased for a very short period of time and then was lowered, I want to say back in 2005 maybe? Back down to the 14.9225. I cannot find any record of when we were ever, if we were ever at our maximum allowable amount by state law, which is 20 mils, and actually is reduced due to headly down to our maximum allowable amount. Right now it's 17.5604, which is what we are proposing the operating millage to be, and that is an increase of 2.6379 mils.
And if I could just make a point, you know, we have known that we've been facing some budgetary issues for a number of years now. As Karen mentioned, the operating millage has stayed static for at least 10 years and, you know, has remained largely around this level and hasn't been the maximum level we could use for quite some time. We've really been using, even with the knowledge of the deficit, we've been using fund balance and looking for opportunities to increase our tax base and revenue for as long as I've been with the city, which is over six years now. You know, we no longer have the option of utilizing fund balance to buy time and keep the burden off the taxpayers. The action we're requesting tonight is the culmination of a lot of different factors, but we just can't put it off any longer, and this is what we're asking for.
What really are the, the major revenue sources for the city? And here's just a reminder, property taxes, our payment in lieu of taxes, and our user fees are our top three revenue sources that we ultimately have some sort of say in. And another one that you don't see on this list that is a major revenue source is state shared revenue, but that is very, we have no control over that really. So we wanted to focus, you know, here on just what we do, what we can do and what we do have control over.
In of these, we have, you know, extensive control over our operating millage. We have some control over our user fees, but even though that's not a huge impact. And then we have a level of control over our pilts, but even that is fairly minimal. But these are the ones that we have basically any sort of say in.
So here's just kind of a pretty graph on, on what that looks like as a total compared to all of our revenue. And this is just focusing again on general funds because that is where most, that is where most of our taxes go to, is our general fund operations. So as you see, almost 50% of it is tax, is property tax, our property taxes. And then somewhat similar is that payment in lieu of taxes, which is another 18%. State shared revenue or state, other state sources is 15% of our total revenue. And then our charges for services, which we consider kind of our other fees, our user fees, is 12%. And then we have this other category, which are non-routine revenue sources that we don't have control over that often are one-time sources or are just those miscellaneous sources of, of income that, that have, that come in. Now, I do, I do want to say that our federal sources here are most likely grants or ARPA funding. Private contributions is very small and fines and forfeitures are very small. So often the suggestions that we receive for increasing fines and penalties for, for littering is not something that's going to make a significant impact on our budget, while it does have another purpose. It's not something we can really focus on. And then our user fees, as we had mentioned before, is a significant revenue source. We are limited on how much we can charge for our user fees. Generally, activities within the general fund and charges within the general fund, the revenues brought in are only meant to cover the cost of service and are not always intended to be a profit-making revenue source. There's very strict limitations on that.
So here we can see our seven-year revenue trend. I think the important things to highlight on this slide is our, you know, our revenues have remained largely static throughout the past seven years, but our taxes have declined. You know, we had a high of, you know, $10,500,000 in 2016, and we're down to $9.8 million this year. Things on revenue are trending static, but the, our main source that we have any control of is trending.
So just for clarification, because I know that it might be a little bit small here, the blue is our total revenue. And as you see in 2016, it looks about to be $20.5 million. And all the way over to the right is 2022 budget, budgeted revenues, and that is 21.1 million. So a very small increase in total revenue over the course of what, you know, six to seven years here. And also the green then is our taxes, our property taxes. And as you can see that we are actually less than 2016, and we already talked about why we, why we're there. But as you can see here, it is remaining fairly stagnant or it is declining. And it, it may be a good opportunity here to talk about our property tax values. And as we said, we lost a significant taxpayer within the city, but everybody is feeling their property values increasing, right? That is, that is what we're essentially, you know, feeling and seeing. Our homes are, are worth more than what they were five, 10 years ago. Why isn't our tax base increasing then? Again, just a reminder, tax value, taxable value is limited on how much it can increase for property owners. It becomes quote-unquote uncapped when a property sale occurs and you purchase a home. Essentially, that's, that taxable value that has remained fairly low and, and changed only by inflation or 5%, whichever is less, due to Prop A really, is, is why we don't see much of that growth, although we are all personally seeing our home values increase, if that makes sense. So moving on to, you know, we, we focus on revenues, and while we continue to say that, you know, and say that it's a revenue issue, it really truly is something that we look at both, from both ends. We look at revenue, what we also look at our expenditures. The reason why we do classify this as a revenue issue though, is because there has been significant change within revenue, and we have not been able to replace that, while the cost of doing business has increased significantly for not just our residents, but also for the city as well. So here's, here's a quick little look at what our expenditures are and where our money goes. Of course, we all love graphs, right, and pie charts here. So this, again, a reminder, this is our, our general fund operations. And it is misleading because this isn't all that we do as a city, right? This is, this is just looking at one part of the city, while it covers many departments. So we do see our police in there at 5.3, our fire at 3.9, almost 4 million, DPWs at 3.9 million, debt service at 3.4 million, engineering at 1.3, community services just shy of 800, and then your other general government, which kind of falls into everything else, is 4.2. And that covers things like city, city clerk elections, HR, IT, city manager's office, legislative, which is our city commission, and various others, planning and zoning, and various other departments within general government. I do want to say that community services, which essentially is our parks and recreation department, what's included in the general fund is only a small portion of what they do. This covers some of the parks. This also covers arts and culture. But it doesn't show Lakeview Arena, the pavilions, well, I think the pavilions actually are in there, Lakeview Arena, tourist park, some of the other, our marinas, things like that, those are covered in other funds, which may have subsidies or, or general fund contributions within, for debt service, which is classified in debt service here. So this is rather misleading because we don't see the other part of this, which is, is revenue, or the revenues that may cover these costs, such as allocations into other funds. And I do want to point out, engineering specifically, while it is recorded as an expenditure within the general fund, it actually does get allocated out to various other funds, which, which cover a significant portion of that. So it's a little misleading just to look at one side, and I can say it's also misleading to look just at revenue as well. You know, can we go back to that one side for a second here? I think this is a really important point to mention as well. Retiree costs and legacy costs are baked into each of these departments. So it's tough to see when we see a price tag, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick on, let's just say the police department at this point. It's, it's difficult to say that the true cost of operations today is 5.3 million or 5.4 million dollars. A significant portion of that is retiree, our retiree obligations, such as pensions and retiree healthcare. Just to put it into context, the entire citywide pension cost annually is close to $5 million. Now, the expenditure is broken out, and not to get into accounting terms here, the expenditure is broken out between general fund and other funds, but a majority of it does go to the general fund, and it's a general obligation for the city. So if all those other funds didn't exist or all those other operations didn't exist, we would still be responsible for paying those obligations. That's close to $5 million annually that we don't have any control over necessarily. I say necessarily, there are things we can do. But those are legacy costs. Retiree healthcare is also close to $600,000 to $700,000, and a bulk of that does go into the general fund. Those are obligations that we are, we, we have to make on an annual basis. So our room for looking at and, and reevaluating our expenditures are already limited by legacy costs, which Donna had mentioned, and also debt service, which is also there as well. And you see that at the tune of 3.4 million dollars. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so we just wanted to find a way to visualize really the services that we think represent our city staff. And I'd like to thank, you know, the significant representation we have in this room, not only from department head and middle management level, but from all of our bargaining units as well. But these are the, the services that we provide, that we're talking about, that really I think represent the values of the city of Marquette and its residents. These are the things that we value or enable us to do the things that we value. And it's just worth pointing out that this, this is what we're talking about. This is the city. These are the things that we, you know, strategically plan on, that we hold dear and value.
These are the things that we do. And these things are not by any means small or easy to, to really evaluate or decide whether they are worth it or not, because these are the things that make our community so vibrant and rich and strong. And this is something that we felt is, is, it's only the beginning. There's, there are things that are not included on here, but this is obviously a quick list, and these are all the things that we really do offer on a daily basis. And again, I do want to, I do want to thank the staff that have taken an interest in this and have contributed to, to this presentation and are here representing as well.
So this is one that we've looked at before in previous meetings, but it's just a comparison of our expenditures versus revenues. And we can see that our revenues just are having a hard time matching our expenditures, and, you know, we've been exceeding those levels. You know, I overlaid a couple trend lines, one showing that our expenditures, which is the dark blue, are continuing to rise, our revenues, which are the lighter blue, are flat as we looked at, you know, earlier in this presentation. And then I put kind of the inflation rate on there. It doesn't, you know, of course, match perfectly with any of, you know, with all the years we're looking at. But we do see that our expenditures probably are going to rise because our basic operating costs are going to continue to rise. You know, everyone is feeling this. It's a post-COVID or, you know, in COVID economy, and inflation is skyrocketing. This only means that city services are going to become more expensive, and we already are not able to match our expenditures with our revenue levels.
I think a really good example that we had just recently experienced, or even actually had a conversation with, with several commissioners, is the cost of steel. And this was brought to light when we were visiting, I think, the municipal service center, and we were looking at a plow truck and the blades actually under the, those plow trucks. And the cost for, and I'm going to get this wrong, honestly. And I'm looking at Commissioner Davis because she, she remembered this so vividly, I think. The cost of a blade, and I, and I'm gonna say it's like, what a six-inch piece, you know, of steel, so long, and it lasts, what, I want to say, six hours, six hours. That cost has nearly tripled. And we, I don't know how, I can't put a number on how many we go through, but it is, it is a sign that the cost of doing basic services has increased. I'm actually gonna, if you don't mind, Mayor. Duane, do you remember how much that, that cost was?
It used to be about $135 to put on a set of blades. Now it's up over, close to 300 for a set of blades.
So again, it's, it is a basic service that we all depend on, whether you're a resident, a visitor, or you do work within, within the city. Something that we depend on, and that cost of doing business has tripled. And we haven't even really had a chance to evaluate what gas prices are going to do. So the point of this is really truly that while we look at our expenditures and they're increasing, there are, we are obviously still considering and looking at how we do business and how we operate, but the basic services are costing significantly more to provide. So moving on to community concerns, this is kind of that FAQ area that we wanted to touch on. And many of the common themes of those questions, those comments, those rumors, those, you know, those, those things that we just wonder, have you really considered this? We wanted to touch on them here. And that first one really is our tax options. We, within the state of Michigan, are limited to what we can be doing. And I focus on taxes, and we can get to the other revenue sources, but I do focus on taxes because that is our major property, our major revenue source, and is the major revenue source for many states and many municipalities. So as you see here in this, this chart, we really only have two options for, for taxing. And unfortunately, that does impact property owners and residents versus some of that, those others that, that do visit, such as tourists. So obviously, property taxes is one, but then also income tax. And that has been mentioned at several city commission meetings, but also has been explored in the past from the city, and it did not go, go forward. The process for, for an income tax is really a lengthy one. It does require a vote, a voter approval. And it does take some time for it to actually come to fruition and, and actually receive revenue. So even if things were put on the ballot for the next election, let's just say it was already in the works, we still wouldn't receive any money until 18 months after that, because it does take a full year for income to be assessed, so to say, and then also received into, back to the city. Now, that income and tax would, would impact both residents that work in the city and then also those that are non-residents that work in the city, but you do utilize our services. So going back to this graph, as you can see, we are limited to two options, whereas other states like Ohio and Illinois are seven, have seven different options, and that includes city sales tax, motor vehicle licenses, alcohol and tobacco tax, and publicly, public utility sales. One thing that has been asked by several residents are, what about a tourist tax? Why can't we, you know, impose a tax on sales? And we'll get to that here, and/or our hotels. And again, we'll get to tourism here shortly.
So I just wanted to touch on brownfields. You know, it's kind of a buzzword in the community recently. Really, brownfields are one of the few economic development tools that are afforded to us by the state that really make a decisive impact. I've highlighted here the brownfields that will contribute to the general fund when they have finished paying off. I did leave off the N M U Foundation Verdia Hospital project, as that's very new and is not really appropriate to put it on the active brownfield list quite yet. But really, when you remove the ones that affect the DDA capture, and that means that they will never have an impact on the city general fund, you're really boiled down to four. they will never have an impact on the city general fund, you really boil down to four. And this, these projects are a part of investing in the future of the city. You can see that the properties they were on were not contributing very much to the general fund beforehand, if at all. If they were contributing beforehand, that, you know, amount is maintained, but really by allowing a brownfield capture on those, we are investing in the future and investing in future taxable value. We can see for each one of these projects, the, you know, future general fund contribution after completion is massively increased, exponentially increased over what they were doing before. In addition to estimated revolving loan contributions, which will help us avoid future brownfield projects and future brownfield tax captures, but allow us to do brownfield-esque projects while contributing to city strategic goals. And it's important to remember that, you know, the Marquette of 15 or 10 years ago isn't necessarily the Marquette of today. I mean, the Marquette today is a very attractive place for investment. It's a place where people want to go. It's a place where people enjoy recreating, a place with a very, you know, clean image of, you know, the lakeshore and a lack of industrial contamination. But a lot of that was made possible by brownfield tax capture. Founder's Landing helped clean up an entire portion of the lakeshore. The Duke Life Point project removed a former municipal building, helped us build a new building, and kept that industry within the city. The Liberty Way project tore down a crumbling factory, and really, if you look at that section of Washington Street, it's been revitalized. These are all investments in the city and make it a better place for people to put immediate return, returnable taxable value into today. Also kind of laid out a brownfield payoff timeline. These are conservative. We are estimating some of these to pay off much sooner, most notably, the Duke Life Point project, and I believe Liberty Way is set to pay off sooner as well. But just just so you're aware, these are the the payoff years for the brownfield projects. And I also included, you know, the increase that they are going to show to the general fund. U P State Bank, $50,000 a year, Founder's Landing, $314,000 a year, Duke Life Point, $1.2 million per year, and Liberty Way, $166,000 per year. So these are the strategies. People ask, why, you know, have you done anything with We Energies closing? Well, we weren't always able to predict that that plant was closing, and when we did, we really started looking around and see how we could invest, how we could sell city property and how we could revitalize city property. This is the mechanism we were able to use to invest in the future of Marquette, and it allowed us to take state tax capture, which no other mechanism lets you take state taxes and invest it locally without the approval of some granting agency or other, you know, bureaucratic board. This is the one that let us take state dollars and city dollars and invest in our future. So while brownfield projects, you know, can be a little confusing, it's really their impact on our general fund right now is not significant, and it will be a significant addition in the future.
Just one, one note on, oh, a couple notes, actually, on this one. An increase in the operating millage actually will increase the tax increment revenue that does come from from these and actually repays these projects back faster. So there's actually a potential that this would speed up by having this increase, and the operating millage will speed up these payoffs.
Every one of these projects is paying their full taxable value into taxes, and it's being captured so that, like Karen said, that increase will just mean they are paying more into the pool that repays, and it will get back to us faster.
That is such an interesting point, because that actually has been something we've heard quite frequently is, well, you're granting all these tax debatements, you're, you're, these people don't even pay taxes, and they're using our tax dollars. No, they pay taxes, and they will have an increase also, which will only go into paying this off sooner, hopefully. The other note I do want to make on this is, while there is going to be a significant increase in tax revenue when these do come back on, fully back into the general fund, there is a mechanism that is in place that that you, as the commission, have approved to ensure that we are not overtaxing, and that really comes in the in the form of that fund balance policy. There's a minimum and there's a maximum that we, by the policy, are required to have, and that actually is evaluated every year on an annual basis, especially right around tax time and budget. So while this feels like, well, you're never going to lower the the millage, even when you have 1.2 million coming back in, well, there's mechanisms in place to make sure that we are addressing that if it comes to be that there is too much in reserves that has been built up due to revenue over expenditures. I wanted to make sure that that was a good point, because that is, I understand, a concern.
The next, you know, frequently mentioned thing in the community I wanted to touch on is the marijuana excise taxes. You know, I've seen many times, you know, the city should be flush with money. There's so much marijuana money going on right now. Really, we have very little, pretty much no control over this beyond how many licenses we issue for dispensaries in the city. The state controls all of the revenue for the excise taxes, and they are the ones who divviate out proportionally according to the licenses that you've issued. This is, that marijuana excise tax is the only mechanism for collecting marijuana taxes. We can't levy our own excise tax on it. We can't do any of that. In 2021, we only received $28,000 because only had one operational license in 2020. In 2022, we did receive $225,000 or $56,000 per license, because we had four operating licenses in the city. These revenues are expected to level off as more licenses are issued throughout the state. I don't know if anyone's done any studies on marijuana in legalized states, but generally, you see use and expenditures pick up for the first few years, and then everything kind of tends to drop off after that, especially the price and the amount of taxes being collected. So this isn't anything that we can rely on. It changes each year, and it's really impossible to predict. You know, we zero out the expected budget for this every year and just have to wait and see what we're going to get and be pleasantly surprised like we were this year, or maybe disappointed, you know, in years to come.
Tourism, that's been, again, another common question or common area of focus on how we can benefit from that financially. And unfortunately, our options are incredibly limited for us to take advantage of of any of that financially. So, you know, the, the easy one to look at is how we can benefit financially from our, from our hotels and the use of our hotels and our Airbnbs. We, as the city that we are and the size that we are, where we're located geographically within the county that we're located in as well, is incredibly limited. We cannot, there is no legal mechanism for us to tax a hotel directly from and receive those revenues directly to the, to the city. What we do have right now, what you do see on some of those larger hotels, is a charge that goes back to our our convention on Visitors Bureau or Travel Marquette, but that is limited only to our, our hotels, and that is a specific use that they they have control over, not us at the city. Short-term rentals currently are not taxed at all in a sense, in the same way that hotels are. Obviously, there are pending or proposed pieces of legislation out there that may add a piece of of taxing or or some sort of lodging assessment on there, but that is not being proposed to come back directly to the city. It will go to either the county or, again, that convention and Visitors Bureau. So we would not see anything directly. And again, that doesn't address the needs that we have. That only allows us to be reactive to the issues that we would be seeing for increases in in any visitors or a tourist. So again, we cannot add a tax onto hotels or short-term rentals from a city standpoint. Inspection fees, yes, we do, we do charge a fee for inspections for rentals, as I mentioned previously. That fee that we do assess is only covering the cost of service, and we are limited to that. We cannot profit off of that. That is not the intent of that and not legally allowable. And also, tourism isn't, isn't a service that we offer. Yes, we, we certainly protect the tourists that do come in. We certainly provide them, you know, somewhere, somewhere to to recreate, and we, we obviously use that as an economic development tool, but that is not a service that we are focused on, and we do not fund specifically. So receiving revenue from that is is very limited and outside of our scope, really. So moving on to our resident impact and our timeline, and here we really want to cover what that means for the property tax, the property owners and the taxpayers, but also some of our renters, and and what our options are, because we do understand that this increase is going to be difficult.
So this is a breakdown kind of of the more common taxable values you'll see in the city of Marquette. You know, a taxable value of $60,000 means that your house probably had a purchase price of about $120,000. $80,000 taxable value means your purchase price was around 160, 150 is 300, and then we included the $500,000 taxable value or purchase price of about 1 million, and this is all a little generalized, just to kind of demonstrate the impact. The yearly increase you would see if your house has a taxable value of $60,000, which is kind of the lower end of the distribution, would be $158 or about $13 per month, and then kind of going up the scale to $150,000 taxable value or purchase value of $300,000, you'd see a yearly increase of about $400 or $33 per month. You know, this is where the large amount of our homes in the city lie. I've heard, you know, it's said that, oh, my rent or my, my taxes are going to go up $100 a month. You would have to reach about that $1 million purchase price to see monthly impact of $100.
Let's go back for a second here and think about what I did just say when you, with that uncapping, or when you hold on to your house or own your house for a significant amount of time, your taxable value cannot increase significantly over time. It can increase the rate of inflation or 5%, whichever is last year after year. And we have not, since Prop A had been implemented, or that amendment had been implemented, has not seen that 5% increase since its, since its, you know, implementation. So really, that's, you know, we are focusing on these levels just as a point of reference. You can look up your own taxable value either on your tax bill or your assessment notice, or you can go on to, we do have the instructions on how to calculate that and to find your taxable value on our dedicated millage webpage, which the address is right there. So we, we want to empower our taxpayers to be able to determine that and what that means. So we do have some directions on that. Now, we, we mentioned that the, the range of where our, our taxable values are in that, that range is demonstrated right here, and close to 75% of our residential property owners are at that $100,000 taxable value, again, about a $200,000 sale price or below. And in, when we look back at the, the scale, we're looking at, again, that 211 or below annual impact for, we kind of use that average as $80,000 taxable value. So that's, that had been our focus, but obviously, there are others above that and can still calculate that as well. Looking at the implementation timeline, and this is coming towards the ends of the presentation, so thank you for bearing with us, but here we are today on June 21st, and the taxes, property taxes are levied on July 1st. And so there is limited time, obviously, for printing and finalizing the bills, which is why we really have been having this conversation for quite some time. But just because it is levied on July 1st and you receive that bill, you have until September 14th to pay that without penalty and interest. After that, there is a 1% monthly penalty or interest on unpaid balance of of your, your bill. And at February 28th, that is the, that is the last day that you can pay your taxes at the city with only our interest and penalty assessed. On March 1st, it does get turned over to the county for collection, and obviously, they do add on their own penalty and interest. I want to make it very clear, and and I want to make sure that that feeling of panic, that you are unable to make this payment or unable to pay this increase, that all of a sudden, that you will lose your house the next day, that is not the case. There is, there are several options out there. What we ask is our residents to, to pay what they can, so that that unpaid balance that would have a penalty or interest assessed to it, that we cannot waive legally. Pay what you can so that that amount is is limited or or smaller, as much, you know, minimize as much as possible, and have a conversation with city staff in order to find out what your options are. Even if it does get turned over to the county, you do not lose your house right away. There is, there are several steps that happen. And I mean that in the sense that it's not this feeling of panic. There are resources and options. It doesn't happen overnight, and that is the important part of this, is to have that conversation with other staff, or whether it's with the county at that point. So we, we understand this, and we would like to be able to work with all of our residents on a case-by-case basis in order to address their financial needs and their financial concerns as well.
We really recommend that you call the city, if you're a resident who's concerned about their ability to pay, and see what kind of payment plan we can work out and how it can be best structured for you and what your impact is going to be.
That is really where we wanted to focus on with this timeline as well, because that, we, we feel that, we understand that, and there are, there are options and resources, and that is, that is sometimes just calling up in hand, finding out what that would be. Those are all the stats that we can throw at you within a short timeframe, and I said we would keep it brief, however, here we are. So I, I do want to say that these are the common themes that we have been hearing. There are several other questions, I'm sure, that are out there, and this is something that, you know, obviously, we've been studying the data, looking at all the resources, and trying to come up with the best solution. While it seems like we are impacting revenue, that is because that's what we can do right now, and that's the immediate impact that we can, we can have. We have a need to address this issue immediately in order to save us from future concerns or future financial crisis. As we had mentioned in several conversations, that we would be below our minimum fund balance within the next 18 months, and then we would be completely insolvent within the next two, two and a half years or so. And at that point, there are several other triggers that occur and several other, you know, things that we would have to to do that are required by the state even. So revenue is the immediate impact, but we still are committed to exploring expenditures, just like you, as the commission, do every single year during the budget process and just as staff does on almost a daily basis. So this is both a revenue issue, but also an expenditure reevaluation. So we are well aware of what this will, will do in the short term, but we are also looking at the long term and planning for future improvements that can be funded through cash versus debt, and also being able to get back up on our feet and be able to address any emergencies, but also future projects that we would like to accomplish.
If the commission chooses to take this action tonight, no member of city staff breathes, breathes out in relief. We continue to work, and we continue to find solutions, and we continue to see how we can provide the best amount of services for the most cost-effective, in the most cost-effective manner for our residents.
That is all I have. So I know that it's later on the agenda item, so I will take questions at that time.
Absolutely. Thank you to our city manager and assistant city manager for a very thorough presentation. I think you've hit on a lot of the questions and concerns we've received in the, the last few weeks. I think I'll open it up to discussion from the commission, anything on the presentation. We do have an agenda item, probably get into specific how we plan to vote, but if there are questions, specifics on the presentation or broad questions, now would be a good time for that kind of dialogue. Commissioner Davis, we'll start off with you.
Thank you. Those of us on the commission have been spending a lot of time worrying about this issue for a year now. It's kept us up at night, and it's not something that we take lightly. And there was a lot of information just presented, and we know it pretty intimately, but you might be hearing it for the first time, and it might be kind of like too much to throw at you at one time, so I'd encourage you to ask questions that you haven't asked during public comment, or that you don't feel that you have answered. And I'm just going to throw out a couple questions that I have heard that I don't think that you presented. Oh, you know, first of all, you know, one of the first questions that we all get is, well, what kind of cuts have you made? And, and our city manager went over those. I kind of wish you would have had a slide on those, because there was a good list. And let me just kind of talk about that, that we have cut. We've cut a lot of things, and we haven't bought a lot of things that we feel that we need to buy. And we really are down to more of a drastic measure that we need to take at this point. So here's one of the questions. So if you could go back and just listen to what she talked about in terms of the things that we have cut, it's, it's very significant. So one of the questions I get is, well, you know, this, this coming year is going to be really difficult for a lot of us due to increase of costs of everything. Why can't the city raise the rate less than the 2.6 mil and maybe take that deficit out of the fund balance and maybe raise it a little more the next year or two? So that's one question. I don't know, maybe if you want to answer that, or, I'll just give you the other one. The other one is that I didn't hear answered, and that people want to know is, okay, so we're going to raise taxes, but, you know, what other things are we looking at? And you kind of hinted to that, but what are we studying and what are we considering for the future that might just take longer to, to? for the future that might just take longer to, to work on and implement?
Great. So to address that first question of can we split the millage increase or only do a partial increase, while certainly that is within, you know, your, your powers to do so, it is not what's recommended by staff at this time. To make the biggest impact in order to have the, the best ability to plan for the future while addressing the immediate need is to have the full increase right away. It is something that is difficult and a difficult decision to make all at once. However, having that decision one time versus feeling that, you know, pain and decision again is, is also a consideration. But we are looking really to, to make that biggest impact now in order to plan for the future and essentially get us back on track faster because we also don't know what our economy is going to be next year. And it is not on the trend of, of being more optimistic based off of experts right now.
Commissioner Davis, I mean, just to your point about, you know, raising it partially and using fund balance to cover the rest, we, we've been using fund balance for a number of years. We really need to focus on balancing the city budget without the use of fund balance and maintaining those levels the way they are.
And talk to us about what continuing to use that fund balance will do for the future of our finances in the city.
If we don't raise the operating millage, I believe we're going to spend down the entire fund balance within four to five years, if not less. And before I think we even hit that point, the state will take a notice of our finances pretty seriously and come in for a review and Karen can elaborate on that level of corrective action.
One of the things that I just would like to say to the community is that we're fortunate that we have a city manager who's, some of her previous work was with Plant Moran, which is a company that went in and helped cities that were in financial crisis. So she knows what this looks and feels like and is really helping us to get back on, well, to helping us to get to the good future. You know, we have our city manager who's had experience with cities who are devastated in finances. We have a, an assistant city manager who works really hard at studying a lot of the issues and we have a CFO who, who is really, works hard and knows what she's doing. So I just wanted to make that point. So the second question I had was about other initiatives that we are pursuing, both for revenue and for increased efficiencies, for those that we can talk about.
Certainly. And we have every single department looking at their budget almost on a daily basis, but also trying to come up with creative ways to either collaborate with other departments, you know, be more efficient, cut back on costs. So from a budgetary, from the expenditure side of things, that's, we are reevaluating all of that. We have really extended the life of our assets based off of the maintenance that we do, do on them and actually we do in-house quite truthfully. So we are very fortunate that we're able to do those things, however, there are some, you know, some costs that we do incur. Now, looking at our initiatives for revenue, I did touch on real, real briefly that income tax, which we do feel when we think about the city property or the city with, the property within the city, 50% of it is non-taxable. And in, I don't think we need to point out some of our nonprofits or tax-free, you know, entities because they are an important part of our community and they are what make us very vibrant as well. But by looking at income tax, we are able to address, you know, and receive revenue from some of our biggest customers or our biggest, you know.
We're able to capture the impact of those organizations on our city services.
So that's why an income tax is explored. It's also something that we can, we can maybe ease up on the burden of, of our residents and our taxpayers. We had considered any other millages or property tax millages that could be, you know, quite specific, police and fire millages. We discussed it, I think, our previous two meetings actually. Right now, they're not an option because of our size, but there are some pieces of legislation out there that may allow that. Debt levies are also another option, which is specific to projects and debt that's issued. However, again, that's burdening our property taxpayers and our residents. We do, we do try to take advantage of grants as much as possible, but we do it in a way that we can leverage, leverage our dollar more. And we also are having to evaluate or look at what that matching amount is. So typically, you know, these larger grants that are available for these projects because even when you think about a road project, you can't find a decent impactful road project, you know, more than, less than a million dollars at this point. So when you look at some of those grants, they have a significant match. And so that again is committing us to, to an expenditure that we may not be able to afford. So we've explored many of those options. We are working with MML, with our state legislators, with other organizations to lobby for other options for local municipalities. And as you see, they were quite, quite limited at this point. But we also know even within the UP, we're trying to fight for even state dollars that are available to our other communities that are downstate that aren't possible for us just because of where we're located. So we, we have those, those relationships that we are building and trying to, to come up with something new.
You, you touched on other millages like road millages or debt services millages. Is that a common thing for other municipalities, say around the UP?
I, I'm not entirely sure about around the UP. I just remember from previous experiences, yes, if, if it's an option, they are explored. And in some of those other, you know, cities that may have, you know, been financially distressed, it was something that, one of the first things that the state suggests or that, you know, our best practices suggest is looking at where you can be generating revenue from. But again, our largest.
It just seems like it's another tax, no matter what.
It is another, it's just another tax though, and that hinders other things. We are aware that that does hinder, you know, and has an impact on business growth and economic development. So we're really trying to, to, to make sure that that's a consideration as well.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pass.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. First, I, as sitting here, even having known all the information that you put in that presentation, it still was very overwhelming to catch it all at once. I can't imagine that there aren't going to be a lot of questions. I'm very happy that it was put before public comment for that reason. I will say that I heard, the question I heard the most was along with Commissioner Davis, what are you, like, what did you do? Why can't we cut these things? What can't we cut? And the one thing that I realized was, I'm trying to explain, we have cut. I mean, if you look, we're not doing any road construction pretty much this year at all to fix roads. And if any of you have driven on Division Street, you know we need to, but we can't. And the thing is, is those things have to happen at some point. Otherwise, more and more things are going to happen. The more you kick the can down the road, the worse it's going to get to fix that. Anyone knows with the home improvement project, if your roof starts going and you leave it to leak and you leave it, you're going to be doing a whole lot more work later. And that's the problem we have is weighing, we can't just kick everything down the road forever. We have to make sure we're, we're keeping up with these or it's going to be millions and millions more we're spending in the future. The other thing that I want to make clear, someone once, someone told me that as commissioners we're paid too much and maybe, maybe people think that. I do want to make it clear that we are paid $7,900 a year to be a commissioner on, for the city. We do not make a large sum of money to do this. We do it because we want to make an impact in the city. And on top of that, the city staff, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe department heads have took a raise this year at all.
Department heads and middle management haven't taken up a cost of living raise in at least two years.
In two years. Our contracts that we renegotiated with our city staff, our hardworking staff that do the things that keep this city running, they have not, they have gotten very minimal raises that don't keep up with inflation and they are still working hard for us because they want to make the same impact that we do. But at some point, we need to help them too. And so we need to get our city in a better standing to where we can pay our employees the way we want to, the way they deserve to be paid. And by doing that, it's we have to get ourselves in financial right first. And so we have to make the steps towards it and none of the steps are easy. Not a single commissioner on this board is taking this decision lightly. It is our taxes that we are raising too if we do this. We are all hit by it as well. None of us want to do this, but we also want to see a city keep going and we want to make sure that Marquette is a place that has the, has the financial standing to go on for years, that we're not constantly worrying about whether we're going to make a budget the next year or something's happening. Years from now, 10, 15 years, when these brownfield plans come into play, we will be in a better standing as a city. And there are top limits. Someone else said this to me and they were worried that we're just going to keep collecting more and more taxes and we're never going to bring it down. Whereas the city has limits on the top of how much we can collect, how much our fund balance can get to before we have to start dropping things. And also traditionally are, from what we've seen with commissions in the past, before me, before us, most of them have tried to keep it as low as they possibly can, which is part of the problem. This should have been raised years ago to slowly do it instead of all at once and then it wouldn't have, we wouldn't be in the place we are. But no one wants to raise taxes. It's, it's the thing that no one wants to do. And in that case, had we done it incrementally, we could have brought it back down. We could have kept ourselves instead of using fund balance over theirs years in a good standing. Right now, we are doing what we have to do to right the wrongs of things that have happened in the past and everyone, you know, 2020. But we want to make sure that we're going forward and giving the city a good financial standing going forward. And I, it's just from what the city has done and the work, they wouldn't have come to us if this wasn't the only way they could do it. They worked hard to find every way that they could to get there. And I want to make it clear that we are all taking this decision extremely seriously and making sure that you know that we're not making it lightly and we have tried every other way of doing this up until this point.
Lieutenant Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you both for not only a refresher, but also kind of an updated presentation. Commissioner Davis and Hanley, I just want to thank both of you for how well put both your questions and remarks were there. I do have two questions for the two of you. One of the questions about, you know, could we do maybe half of the increase now and then the full amount next year? Hypothetically, let's say we did that, when would we become financially insolvent? How much would that shrink our window of, you know, staying our heads above water? Just to put that in perspective.
Mid-year of fiscal year 2025, if we split that in half, we would be completely out of reserves. That means there's no, there are no, no room for emergencies, no room for future planning or anything that would, if fiscal year 25 and that would be mid-year even.
Okay. And here's a question for you. I'm glad your previous experience got brought up a little bit. At what point, let's say we did something like that, do you think the state would bring in an emergency manager?
So that's not necessarily the, the same legislation or law that was back then that had applied, but there are several criteria that are, you know, are listed that look at anything from how quickly you're spending your fund balance, what your, your pension obligations are, how well they're funded, what your ratios are, you know, your debt ratio. It's, it's an individual case by case basis. However, the, the checklist that we've been seeing leaves more room for interpretation, I guess, or, you know, interpretation from the state, which just in past experiences, they really don't ask for any clarification on things. They just make their own assumptions. Now, the one good thing that we have had recently is because of fiscal year 21 and where we ended with the year, we were able to put in a small amount of, of money into fund balance into our reserves, small, less than $100,000 and that is small. So we were able to reset that clock. About four years of using fund balance is, is an alarm for the state at that point. And we have been able to successfully kind of restart that, so we're buying time at this point. But essentially when you are not, not living within your, your fund balance policy, you're not following that, you're, you're below that minimum and you're not addressing it, when your debt ratios are, are, you know, off and not favorable, when you start seeing those bond ratings decrease, are starting to be some obvious red flags. And that's not even addressing their checklist, which I don't have in front of me unfortunately.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, it might've been a year, year and a half ago, maybe a year ago, we even, for lack of a better term, refinanced some of our debt while rates were as low as they were, to save us some of the amount we're spending every year on that. I don't know if you remember those figures off the top of your head, but.
I don't unfortunately remember those off the top of our head, but we are in constant communication and conversations with bond counsel and they generally are, you know, watching out for us on opportunities. And they're also consulting with us to, to provide us with guidance for a debt management plan, long-term debt management plan, which helps us start paying off that debt and not issuing new debt and starting to build up reserves in order to either take advantage of those times where we can either refinance, for lack of a better term, pay off debt or fund capital projects with cash versus debt.
Last one for you here. Sean, if you could go back to the brownfield timeline slide for me. So is this, this is our current timeline, right?
Yes.
Do you have a rough idea on estimates of what this would look like if the commission approved the increase as far as how much more it would move up these to actually being on our tax roll again?
I think we'd look at maybe a year or two.
For each of them, probably? Okay. Thank you. I think that's all I have for now.
Commissioner Hill?
Thank you. Thank you for this. Could you go to the slide with all the words on it, please?
You'll have to be more specific. No, I got you.
Sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is, thank you, yeah, to, great questions, great comments so far, thoughtful presentation. The, the question is, you know, taxes are the price we pay for civilization. It's also another thing that people have said. My grandpa used to say that all the time. And this is what we're paying for. So another way of looking at this is we're protecting what we value in what we pay for. And looking at these activities, they contribute to a great quality of life here and some of them are the foundational pieces, winter maintenance, capital improvements, code enforcement, finance. Some of them are the things that what we love about this, this place. I personally love the fit strip as much as I love the beach and the lake. So let's talk, I would like to spend, we've spent time about, talking about revenue and stuff, but I would like to spend a little bit more time on services and what we do. And again, maybe to go over again, the, the things we have done to keep everything so flat and not just, not just with COVID and post-COVID or wherever we're in now, in COVID, but in the years before that, I think there were also activities or things done. And could you speak to some of those things? And I don't know if you need this list to look at that or if you looked at the bar graphs, but.
I think we spent a number of years looking at attrition, looking at efficiencies in our departments, holding positions open for, you know, anywhere from a month to half a year to see if they are needed and at least save that little bit of value. You know, we've really looked at city services for, as long as I know, at least the past decade and see how can we be more efficient? How can we utilize the talented staff we had to the max of their ability without tipping over into either, you know, running afoul of minimum manning standards or pushing into overtime constantly? That's just one thing I can think of off the top of my head.
Yeah, and, and we certainly don't ever want to cut on anything that would be of safety concern, whether it's for our, our employees or our residents. However, we, you know, we, we do make sure that we are, you know, not just at the minimum, but obviously at the, the safest operations. Last year, after we had discovered, you know, our deficit and met with all department heads in a department head wide meeting, it was a very, you know, clear message of we need to be looking at operations in all departments, but also coming up with creative solutions, whether it's working together or exploring new options. And it was a beautiful picture and I think I, you know, really tried to, to, you know, put it into a vision, but they, it was a beautiful picture to see everybody staying after the meeting and working together and trying to pull ideas from other departments into their own department. And really, it showed how serious that each department was taking this. There wasn't a single one that hadn't gotten back even and, and really tried to explore more. So unfortunately, I don't have any specific things other than just really reevaluating our positions and our expenditures, but that's how serious it was. It was all the way down to staff level of, of trying to come up with ideas.
Is it fair to say that we have fewer staff now than we did previously?
When you look at some of the statistics that are included in, I think, the most recent, recent financial report, we're about the same. But there are some in, you know, more in other departments, less in other departments, but we are about the same. We offer significant more, significantly more services and we have many more efficiencies. So if you compare that to what we offer now than what we did 10, 15 years ago, you know, evening it out, we really, really probably have less if you think about each individual department compared to the services we provide. department compared to the services we provide.
Okay. And then, the thing that also is, could you go to the slide that shows the taxes and versus the total revenues and then the taxes?
That one?
No, the, the other one. The one that had the two, there was a green, it was bright green, and then, that one, yeah. So, again, I think, you know, the, you know, how would you manage your own household budget? If my, if my, if my income was stagnant or going down, you know, there's, what, what, what can you, what can you do? And, and as was shown in the very first slide, Michigan really limits what a local municipality can do, particularly a municipality of 20,000. If we were a bigger municipality, there would actually be more that we could do, but we're not. And so, we are, our seven years of having revenues go down and working hard to keep our costs even, and, and then, and then sort of bringing money in, using it to cover, you know, a, cover that year, and every year, bringing something in to cover that year, but it didn't, it wasn't a steady income, right? We didn't have steady income. We had this, that, you know, a grant or a something, something, or a sale. And, you know, I don't think we can, we can't keep selling the furniture to, to, to pay the operating costs. That really, I don't think that gets us where we want to be either. So, I think, I really appreciate that we can have a conversation about what we offer as a city and what it costs to be a, be a community that offers these things. I think that's important, and I hope, I do, I hope that folks that are here ask questions, do come and ask us questions so we can continue to understand what, what you, you might see things that we don't see. And I will stop there.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the questions I've had, in fact, several times, is legal than the means, easy to say, just cut 10% everywhere. What would happen if we just cut it unilaterally 10% everywhere?
A lot would happen. So, it's, it's difficult to just say, go ahead, every department, cut 10%. And we have tried that, we have challenged our departments to look that way. It's not effective, because when you look at the services that we do provide, many of them touch or impact other, other funds or, or revenue sources or even services. So, what we have been focusing on is what we offer. And so, when you look at those city services and, and all of those words, and all of those services and things that we do, what are you willing to part with? That's the question we really look at. And 10% across the board is already limited by our debt obligations and our pension obligations. So, now you're really looking at core services being affected. And I, I, you know, obviously, you know, we have, everybody has ideas for that, but really, that is a deeper conversation that we'd have to have before the commission, and I, at this point, don't feel comfortable making any sort of statements on that of recommendations.
Well, I'm not advocating it, but thank you for putting it in very clear terminology, I guess, so hopefully, everybody can understand that. And thank you too for the great presentation. But one little piece of history, we did talk about the idea of a hotel tax. In other words, a lodging tax is, is common in most of the entire universe. Representative Ken Benzey did a nice job putting together a, literally a, such a tax for the Upper Peninsula counties. And unfortunately, it had to be supported by the counties, not the cities. County had to buy the tax, then the cities could execute it. Except our county didn't like it. The chair of the county board at that time turned it down, didn't like it at all, and that ended it completely. So, politics plays a role sometimes in these types of decisions, far beyond the city to be able to influence. But certainly, it's one that if we have an opportunity from a landscape perspective to make a run at, we certainly should. We are remiss in not doing that. I love that slide, and thank you for having it put up, but I, I love it, because I think it really defines the question that we're, we're trying to answer tonight. And that's simply, what is the Marquette that we want to live in? What kind of, of a city do we want to have? Where, where do we want to be? And I look at this, this list of activities and things and stuff, and that's the city I want to be in. That's the city I want Marquette to continue to be. I look at the big one that says accredited police department, and I realize that we are only one accredited police department, one of five in the state of Michigan. And the only reason we are accredited is because the police department said they want to be accredited, and picked it up on their shoulders and took care of it. Now, why is that important? That's important because if you look back a couple of years, all the riots that came across this nation, and all of the problems in some cities with how the police department was acting and responding, if you think two of all the, the calls to fund the police and the whole very tumultuous error, you realize the importance of having that department fully trained and fully ready to the standards of today. That's a proud thing for the city. And we look at the fire department, a full-time professional organization. Do we want to cut the fire department? Do we want to cut the police department? Because there's no way you're not going to have to do that when you look at where the money is being spent. These are two major items in the budget. Do we want to stop plowing snow, at least in some lesser storms? We would have to, and because again, that's a major component of our, of our budget, major expenditures. So, you can't just say, I'm going to do this, because it's like the manager said, it really impacts everything together. So, while I don't think any commissioner wants to raise taxes, I never met a politician that ever did. There are times when I think you have to stand up and you have to make the decision that's best not only for you, not for you personally, but really for the community at large. And I think this is one of those opportunities, one of those occasions, when we just have to stand up, look at the numbers, we've been looking at them for over a year, really, and understand that this is the direction we have to go. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Banzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that most of the questions I was going to ask have are, have already been asked and answered very well. I had a big, long statement I was going to read. Commissioner Davis is laughing because she's looking at it on my laptop right now. And I'm not going to subject you all to that, because I think my colleagues have spoken very eloquently, and the city staff has spoken very eloquently on this topic. I would just sound a similar note to Commissioner Stonehouse, and, and maybe be a little bit more pointed about it. You know, if we're talking about, oh, well, you should cut non-essential services, or you should cut that department, or you should have 10% cuts across the board, pick like half of the words that are written on that slide and cross them out. And they're either getting cut significantly, or we just don't have them anymore. That's what that looks like, realistically. And, and so, I, I understand, you know, people want to point at specific departments, people want to point at specific expenses that, you know, as, as was noted earlier, I think people maybe have an impression the city spends a lot of money on tourism. We don't fund tourism. People maybe want to talk about arts and culture. They not only generate almost as much revenue as is spent on them, but they also are less than 1% of the city budget. People maybe want to talk about parks and rec. And while that's complicated, as the city manager noted, the community services department accounts for only about 3% or 4% of our budget, and they also bring in significant revenue. So, you can see where two departments, which are responsible for a large number of the things on that slide, are doing a whole lot with very little. And they've been doing more and more with less and less as time has gone on. In 2006, the last time the city increased our millage rate, a dollar had the same buying power as a dollar and 44 cents today because of inflation. That's the reality that we're living in right now. I think Commissioner Hanley said very eloquently that, in hindsight, the city should have had a long-term plan to avoid excessive bonding or to avoid having to use fund balance and things like that. But we're here now. This commission is a relatively, this city commission is a relatively new one, and it's our responsibility to do what needs to be done to make sure that we can keep Marquette the great place that it is, and that we can keep those words up on that slide. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
I just want to echo what the commissioners have said and what our city staff have said. I, I just really appreciate the thought, the presentation, answering the questions of cities, you know, property owners, residents, business owners, and commissioners. It's not just voters who are impacted by this. I think that's what makes us a little bit more unique. We do have folks who maybe own property who don't vote or live in the city of Marquette. Business owners are impacted, people who rent properties are impacted potentially based on, their rents could go up, so it's a little bit more dynamic than your typical voter issues. I do think that the topics have been thoroughly covered with the, the presentation. Thank you again. I did want to note some of the things that we have sacrificed already, because that seems to be something that keeps coming up, at least from what I've noticed. We've had to sacrifice at least some overtime, which is nice to have at times for certain storms or certain activities, but we've reduced that where possible. I think we've sacrificed an ability to negotiate longer-term union contracts, which I would rather be able to have more stable environment for amazing union employees. Hiring of certain positions, I know you said it's about, you know, the same as where we were, but there are certain positions we would like to have that we're not able to fund at this point in time, which limits, you know, maybe some of our communication or, but we're doing the best with what we have. But I do see that we could, you know, make that next step if, if we had the funds to do so. Pausing new initiatives until we can get a hold on the budget. So, you know, maybe 13 months ago, we went through our strategic plan, and we had all these great ideas of things we wanted to add, expand on, and then, maybe a month later, we realized the situation we were in with the budget, and we had to hit pause on almost every strategic plan and goal that we had. So, you know, it's a little frustrating to have to do that, but, you know, we've got to get back to basics and make sure that our budget is solvent for the future, so we can come back and look at those important strategic planning and our upcoming master planning objectives. Road projects, vehicle and equipment replacements, and that's just the things I could think of off the top of my head. I know there's a lot more that we already have cut. A year ago, we were at a $6 million deficit, and that was brought down to a $2 million deficit. So, we cut $4 million already. I don't know there's much more to cut without significantly impacting what we've got up on that board, and I also really enjoy that word cluster. I'm not sure what it's called. It's called something.
Word cloud.
Who's it called?
Word cloud.
Thank you. Word cloud. It's a word cloud, and it, it's a really nice, vivid example of what we do here in the city. So, thank you for the presentation. I know we'll have the background and the vote in a moment, but I think we were able to ask some questions, have some broad discussions during the presentation, and I think, unless the city manager, you've got anything else, we'll move into public comment next. Go ahead if you want to do.
This is not going to be the last time we, we hear about this, regardless of whichever, whichever direction it goes. There will still be education on this, there will still be information on this, and we still, obviously, need to hear from the residents as well. So, this is not the last time you're going to hear, and the communication will always be open, and we will always have, have that, that ability to have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will go ahead and open up public comment at this point. Members of the public wishing to speak have three minutes to do so. Please clearly state your name and physical address, and go over to the side podium for today's meeting, please. Please make sure to speak into the microphone so those at home watching can hear as well. Right over here, the side podium, if you'd like to speak. Three minutes, name and physical address.
All right. Sorry, I struggle with my sunglasses here.
We have someone on the timer?
James Gallant, Marquette County Suicide Prevention Coalition, 538 Yama Road. These are my opinions. And as the mayor pointed out, and Fred Stonehouse pointed out, that the problem here is that we're going to be getting to a background in motion soon. So, please correct one of the problems that you had in the past, you said one of the wrongs of the past, and please with a formal point of order concerning this reoccurring breach that we find yourself in right now. This was created, this was addressed by John Kivula, Mayor John Kivula, back before when Ron Keefe determined that this is a breach of the rules. This is not, you don't have any motion pending. She said you're going to have, you're going to have a motion soon? You've been looking at this for a year, you have no motion pending. Robert Rules of Order, page 366, line 8, says there shall be no debate before there's a motion that's properly seconded. The decorum is, your statements shall be germane to the immediately pending motion. This is the wild card. You keep pulling this wild card out over time. And so, I'd ask you to, to please make a motion. This is, this is the whole point, is the, the point of order is going to be, read the rule onto the record. Line 366, or page 360, line 8, you have a copy, right? You read that onto the record, says there shall be no debate before there's a motion. So, please do that. See, before, they didn't do that. John Kivula, they just kind of, hey, Ron, what do you think? Hey, okay, yeah. And then, when, you can ask, you know, Sir Stonehouse has been the one around longest, so, this has been recurring. It goes away and comes back. Discretion of the mayor. So, please, Madam Mayor, entertain a point of order, a formal point of order. Read it onto the record, it's entered into the minutes, it's entered through the journal, so y'all know what it's going to be next time, okay? And, so, nobody knows now what the motion is going to be. See, you have on your agenda, there's no, there's no semblance of order. You have, you're going to approve the minutes, right? But it doesn't say you're going to approve the business item, it doesn't say approve the, the, you know, the millage, so you're going to just wing it. You know, wing it for a while longer? This motion should have been made at the beginning, a year ago. And then, reoccurring comes back, motion to postpone, motion to postpone, motion, and that's still pending right here, right now. This is the problem, this is what led us all here, is they get to slip it in. Every now and then, there's decisions that are made that are inappropriate because you haven't found the rules. And I think y'all know full well what I'm talking about. And you're allowing each other to do it, and you're allowing each other to breach the rules. In your new generations, you can seize this back. You can seize back this opportunity that you have here, to, and just follow the rules every time, though. But that's the point. They'll get it away from you, somebody will, and then they'll get these, you know, Ken Benzey didn't vote for any of these, these Brownfields, she said, yeah, because she knew what was going to happen. So, yes, please get back to the rules. And a special meeting would be in order, public hearing? You could have people come up and, you know, see what they think about your rules.
Sir, that's three minutes. Thank you. We're on to the next. Anyone else for public comment? And just a reminder that the commission's chance to respond to public comment would be during discussion or at the end of the meeting, and Commissioner comments. Go ahead, three minutes, name and physical address, please.
I'm Cheryl Feldman, and I live at 1630 Center Street in Marquette. And I just complimented our two speakers because I think you undertook a Herculean task. I do, and I appreciate the effort. The problem that I see here, and I read this in, I believe, the Mining Journal, was that the average income of residents in this city, barring those that are millionaires and those that are not, is about $46,000. Yes, we have to do something to deal with these issues. I'm not arguing that. But when I look at the amount of money that might be levied against people, for some, this is going to be very difficult. And then, they're going to have to gird their loins and cover their embarrassment and go before a group of people to say, listen, I can't pay this. What am I to do? I mean, we're getting into a whole lot of different emotions that could easily surface. And the, the other question that I have is, I, I looked at one of the charts on the, on how much we would be paying. This is, one of them, you'd be paying $13.95, let's say, or $100. Is that $100 a month? Or what if we just went in, if we could do it and just paid what we owed? I mean, how is this going to be broken down? And I, I think that's important, because when you see the big number, could you put up that chart about what...
Public comment is not a back and forth, ma'am. You can have comment and, yes, really.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Okay. Just read the rules.
Yes. Hey, I believe in those rules. That's my major concern, is that this is, this is going to be difficult for a lot of people. And I just would like there to be an easier way for it to be done. That's all I'm saying. It has to be done. Something has to be done. And was the can kicked down the road beforehand with the previous city commissions? Probably. That's the way of politics. But between the recession, 401Ks, and the stock market tanking, people are going to have a hard time, and we're seeing that even now. Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
All right. Hello. My name is Natalie Cretlow. I'm at 804 Grove Street in Marquette. The past couple of meetings, the city commission... The past couple of meetings, the city commission discussed affordable housing and issues that have been brought to the attention of the commission and that the residents are financially bleeding. Current residents are unable to find affordable housing as it is, and by further increasing property tax, landlords will raise costs yet again, making living in Marquette unobtainable. Like, I'm all for paying for taxes and helping out these wonderful things, but now's not really the time. We're on the brink of a recession and from what I've read, that this tax increase will go into effect starting in July. That's only a couple of weeks for residents to prepare. When people are living paycheck to paycheck, people need more than two weeks just to start putting money aside for this increase. And a lot of our income has been seen pretty stagnant as like residents, as costs go up, our wages are staying the same pretty much. And quite frankly, like, like, just the, I know you guys are like doing what you can, but honestly, like, the lack of public knowledge for these types of things is outlandish. Like, like, I think that the commission and a lot of people, we all need to step up our game. Like, we can look at other cities' commissions' websites and see what they're doing and see all the great things that those people are doing and putting out for their public, for the public to see. And that way, we can come together and find some proper planning to really come together and work on this issue as a whole versus, you know, kind of throwing things together and finding about, finding out about these issues the morning before or the morning after. And if you go on the website, the city's website, you can't find any information on how this budget is going to be dispersed and how like all these funds are going to happen. Like, we really, we also need to look at beyond just Marquette and beyond our county because we can look at what happened in Moab, Utah, and see what's happening there. And it's almost a mirror image of the beginning stages of what's happening here in Marquette. And, you know, I, honestly, like, no offense, but I'm really tired of seeing updated police graphics and things on their vehicles when, you know, that word bubble that we all have loved so much, the bigger ones, are what most money is going towards. And, you know, all these parks and good things, it's, you know, not a lot of funding is going towards those as is because that's how the word bubble works, but.
Madam, our clock is frozen. You have 30 seconds remaining.
Okay. And then, but yeah, I, I think that we should really have some more info to the public so we can have these meetings to really come together and, you know, help each other out and find solutions for these problems. But I don't think raising the tax at this point in time is the proper solution. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Is our clock working now or should I continue?
Yeah, it's counting down right now.
It's, it's already started.
There we go.
Thank you. I shouldn't be charged for the walkover, sorry. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. Very, very tough meeting to sit and listen to. There is nothing easy about what we are paying attention to. Couple of things I want to say is there's two words missing from your word bubble up there. One of them is recycling and I want everybody in the room to know the cigarette recycling program is not costing the taxpayers one dime. I get a label every week from the Lake Superior Waterset Partnership. I use an old Amazon box and then I walk around and collect cigarette butts. So if you're thinking that cutting recycling will save us money, it's actually done all by volunteer efforts. So just want to put that in. Number two, the issue of your water, wastewater treatment plant is not up there and it should be because we could be in a lot worse shape as a town if we hadn't invested in wastewater treatment because there's a lot of towns that have exceeded the amount of money that they can tax people and they're getting nasty letters from the state right now saying they're out of compliance for a variety of different reasons. And I appreciate that no one wants to think about what happens when you flush a toilet, but I guarantee you, you don't want to be in a situation where you flush it and it doesn't work. So I appreciate that this chart is very good, but there's still a couple of things missing. The third thing is, I'm sorry about the person who spoke before me. I know you're sincere, but the people in the room who are saying this is all a big surprise haven't been paying attention because they've been talking about this nonstop since we got a new city manager and a new CFO. And with all due respect to the prior city manager and the prior CFO, they spoke very softly. It was there, buried in their reports, but no one paid attention till we got people who actually understand finance and brought it to our attention. And I'm challenging all of you who are here tonight, very upset because none of, none of us are not upset, but I usually come to these meetings and there's like three people in the room and maybe there's five or six if somebody's getting honored. So if you don't like what's happening here, show up and pay attention. And I apologize if that sounds harsh, but I get lonesome sometime not paying attention here and these things about how we can save money. Number three, in terms of littering, we can't afford to let our town be buried in garbage. And in terms of, I never thought the fines for littering could save us, but on the other hand, I do know if we don't do something about littering, we're going to lose a big part of what makes a city livable. So my last challenge is to the commission, I want each and every one of you to give up your salary for the next year in payment for getting us into this mess. I made that offer once when I ran for office in 2018 and I meant it and I'm throwing the gauntlet down. I want your payment. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else?
Can you go off the second?
No.
But I want.
Anyone else for public comment?
Annie Perry, 1817 West Fair Avenue, Marquette. I was just coming up here to say that, yes, I do pay attention, but sometimes when you have to work, shift work, et cetera, you can't always come to commission meetings. Also, it would, due to our economy right now, it's just some food for thought, but possibly only do a half, reevaluate again for the next budget. That way, can see where the nation's economy is at. Possibly things will have taken a little bit of a turn where we're not at five, six bucks a gallon for gas. You know, maybe food, we can start getting things back on the shelves. It, like I said, it's just some food for thought. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Up next, we have our consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Second, Madam Mayor?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
No, Your Honor.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Now we are on to new business, city operating millage. This was changed to item three instead of item two. This will require a roll call vote. City clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the annual city budget process, the city commission must approve the city's annual tax levy for general operating purposes. Under the provisions of state law and of city charter section eight dash one, this levy cannot exceed 20 mils. While the effects of Michigan's Headley Amendment mean that the current maximum levy the city can functionally collect is 17.5604 mils, the commission approved a levy of 14.9225 for the current fiscal year. While the city's operating millage is reviewed annually, it has not been increased in 16 years. The last adjustment to the millage rate was in 2010 when it was lowered from 15.3 mils to the current rate. As the commission has discussed several times in previous months, the city is facing a revenue shortfall as large taxpaying entities have left city tax rolls in recent years. At the same time, Michigan tax tribunal filings have continued as have the city's long-term commitments tied to a handful of key community revitalization projects. This proposal would increase the city's operating millage to 17.5604 mils. For a homeowner with a taxable value of $80,000, this increase of 2.6379 mils would represent an additional payment of $211.03 per year. The recommendation to increase the operating millage is the first step toward putting the city on a more secure financial footing moving into the future, and there will be further discussions and decisions in coming months. Staff has established a frequently asked questions document, which has been made available online at www.marquettemi.gov/millage and which explains the need for this action while detailing what a change in the millage rate would mean for the average homeowner. Per city charter section seven dash two, the city commission shall by resolution determine and adopt the budget and make the appropriations for the next fiscal year and shall provide by resolution for a tax levy of the amount necessary to be raised by taxation. The total amount of appropriation shall not exceed the revenues of the city as estimated by the city commission based upon a tax levy for all city operating purposes plus all additional and miscellaneous revenues derived by the city in accordance with provisions of law, this charter, and city ordinances. If approved, this increase would take effect July 1st, 2022, and would be incorporated into the summer tax bill. Winter tax bills would not be impacted. Fiscal effects, this proposed increase is estimated to generate an additional $1.5 million in annual revenue. Recommendation, approve the proposed recommendation to increase the city's operating millage to 17.5604 mils and direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution and to execute the city's 2022 L-4029 form. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. I move that we approve the proposed recommendation to increase the city's operating millage to 17.5604 mils and direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution and execute the city's 2022 L-4029 form.
Do we have a second on this motion? Commissioner Bonzel?
I will second the motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hanley, any discussion?
I think we've discussed this a lot today. I completely feel for everything that we've heard. I stand with the city staff that came to us with this and believe that this is the only way we can move forward, but I do want to make a promise to every city resident sitting in this room that I will, every chance I get, try to bring this back down as soon as we can. And you can hold me to that. We look at this budget or this in our budget every year, this mil, every single year, every commission, no matter who's on it, has to look at it and approve it. And every year, I challenge you to make sure that they're only doing what they have to do.
Commissioner Bonzel, any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just say that, you know, some of the comments from folks that, not only that we heard tonight, but that I've received, you know, phone calls, emails, people just kind of talked to me on the street about the concerns that they have about this millage increase, how it might impact them. I hear you. You know, my rent just went up this year. It's, I'm sure it's going to go up again next year if this motion passes. And it's tough. And I know there are a lot of folks in Marquette who are on very tight budgets who are struggling right now, especially with, as was mentioned, right, five, $6 a gallon gas, inflation at 8%. It's a really hard time for everybody, for most people in Marquette. But, and I understand the urge to wait as well, to say, hey, let's give it some time. Let's, we, very, you know, in a very detailed way, we explored what would it look like to maybe ease this in, right, phase it in or to wait a year, give ourselves more time to analyze it in the budget season coming up this fall. And we came to the conclusion that we're ultimately going to have to probably make the same choice, take the same action with the same impact on city taxpayers. The only effect of waiting longer would be that we spend down millions of dollars, of taxpayer dollars, that are in our reserve fund that we otherwise wouldn't have to spend down. And so, and also, right, we don't know what the economy is going to look like next year or two years from now. So while it's incredibly difficult, certainly the most difficult vote I've had to take on the city commission, I don't think that we, that there's a realistic alternative. If people have an alternative, I would love to hear it, but realistically, the alternative is, as I mentioned before, deciding, you know, which of those words on the board you want to cross out. And you'd have to cross out probably most of them. So I will be in support of this motion tonight.
Other commissioners' discussion? Commissioner Davis?
With a really heavy heart that I'm going to support this motion. It's been a very difficult recommendation for the staff and a very personal and arduous decision for us commissioners. When it first came to light, I was adamantly against raising taxes, but we have spent a year studying this issue, brainstorming and vetting different options that we've had. And quite frankly, we've had a big education this year about, you know, and we, you know, we know how limited our options are. And, and as we've become educated, I've realized that further cuts combined with increased prices will just devastate our viability. You know, as a property owner and a retiree, no, I don't want to increase taxes and I really feel for those who are going to struggle with this. As a commissioner, it's my responsibility to ensure that we can continue to have essential services and prepare the city for a strong financial future. You know, I'm, if this operating millage does pass tonight, my hope is that we're able to identify additional efficiencies and revenues that would result in a future decrease. You know, I would join Hanley in committing to you that we will be working for, to identify those efficiencies and to identify increased revenues. And it's really some, something that we need to commit to as commissioners is working and you as a community to work with our legislators to change some of the options that we have to, to change the way cities and municipalities are financially funded. So, and with that, thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
Could you put up that state one, again, the first one? No, the very, the chart with what, what Michigan could do versus what Ohio could do. I thought it was the first one. It was, yeah. So, yeah, just reiterating again, the fact that there's many actions that we cannot take that other communities can and that that is something that the legislature has authority to change in the coming year. And that the choices were made with this Prop. A and the Headley Amendments now 40-odd years ago that also have capped our ability to offer services because of the way that we, not, we, we have property taxes, but they're very, very, very limited. And, and it has, is our, with the great income inequality that has also come in the last 40 years, we are asking some to pay a larger percentage of their income than others based merely on the fact that they got there first. It isn't about whether they, you know, worked harder or, you know, it's just that they got there first. And, and we're paying the consequences for that. So, and, and I think there's going to be a conversation about some of those kind of questions about income inequality that are coming. But as was said so eloquently by Commissioner Davis, we have a responsibility to provide for the viability of this community. That's what you elected us to do. And it is, it's very, very challenging to know that, that in some ways, we're perpetuating some of these inequalities that have built up over time. And I do commit to working towards that and as with Commissioner Hanley saying that we will look at this very intently over time, but at this time, we do need to maintain services. So I'll be voting for this. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. We've been looking at this, been studying it really for the last year. This has not been anything that's come suddenly for the commission, whether at work sessions or meetings or just general education, because you clearly saw what was happening. You knew that you were going to have to make it a very difficult decision on it, and certainly this has been a difficult decision, as it should be. It should not be taken easily. It should not be taken flippantly. It should not be taken without real thought behind it, and this commission certainly has done that. But just looking at things a little bit differently that most people see and they don't, I think, really understand, take a, one of the. really understand, take one of our downtown hotels. That downtown hotel is operating at about 10% of occupancy, and they're paying the city of Marquette a given amount of tax money based on the value of the land, right? They could be operating at 100% of capacity every night, every week of the year, every week of the year, every day of the year, and we would receive not one nickel more. Is that fair? Is that right? Well, according to the state of Michigan, it is, because we don't share in any of the success that the city businesses may be having. So actions that this commission may take in terms of doing better things for fixing highways and making sure that tourists can get into the city easier, the things that you would expect a city to do are not paid back in kind by any of the businesses that are indeed conducting business within the city based on tourism. Now, I'm not faulting the business, they're doing and following the law that they should be, but that's the way the system is set up by Lansing. So when we look at all the no's on that chart, you understand what a handicap cities in Michigan are facing with how to make the ends of that budget meet and how to provide for their citizens. Thank you, Your Honor.
Pro Tem Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I think I, the last year or so that we've been talking about this, I can't think of the amount of times that I have called, emailed, texted the city manager, the mayor with any time I thought I had an idea or a solution to this, and every single time, as the education component over the last year really kicked in, no, we can't do that, can't do that, can't do that, and it's, it's so frustrating spending that, that much time over the last year, all of us trying to focus on finding an alternative solution so we didn't get to this point. To now have, regardless we vote yes or no, neither is a good answer. Neither one's going to make any of us feel great. There is no, like, right decision here. There's pros and cons to both, obviously. I think the rest of my colleagues have probably touched on enough of what I was going to say, but it's just acknowledging that, that there really isn't a good, there isn't a right way we can vote on this. Both have negative and positive outcomes, and we're just trying to do our best for the city in the long run.
I would echo my colleagues here, this is not an easy vote. I think it's right up there with some of the other difficult decisions we've had to make, hiring a new city manager, increasing water rates a few years in a row, certain property decisions we've had to make, some we voted up, some we voted down, and some of the ones we voted down maybe could have helped us with our tax problem, but maybe didn't align with the values that our residents hold dear. So we've had to make a lot of decisions along the way to try to maintain the character of the city of Marquette, and this is one that I think will add to that, but it's a very difficult decision. I do think it's necessary to stabilize our city budget and ensure we can continue to offer our city services that our residents have come to expect and appreciate. So I certainly empathize with those who are going to struggle because of this, and I would encourage you to reach out to city staff and see what we can do to help. I would encourage you in this room and those watching to share those resources with others because I know folks are going to struggle, and that is what keeps me up at night, but I'm hopeful that we can find a way to support those people, and also still what we need to do to make sure that we've got a stable budget moving forward.
Do we have any other discussion before we go ahead and take a roll call vote, commissioners? All right. City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote on this?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to our second public comment session of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address unless you've already done so at this meeting, and yes, you can come up again for the second public comment now if you spoke before.
James Gount, Scandia. And I would like to respectfully disagree with the mayor in her stating the rule that you cannot, no question and answer, you cannot, unless that's in the charter. But the rule, major, simple majority vote override the mayor every single time, unless it's in a charter. And this is the bullying that we're talking about, overstepping the authority to say, no, you can't do that at all, that's voter suppression. You can't just vote to suspend the rule. Got a question for somebody, they're up there, they're right now, and do it. Of course you can, but the mayor's saying you can't. So what is it? Simple points of order. Please do the formal point of order process. If you don't, just gets under the carpet again, recycled again, you know, we recycled city commissioners back from the 80s, you know, Fred's the last of them, the last of them, they got recycled, they were in the 80s, and then they did the same thing over and over, and then you could see in the minutes, it's just over and over, and they did it again. They come pulling out this wild card about not making a motion first. So you're negotiating the motion. I mean, you folks do remember the precedent, the case law of the collective quorum. It seems like you folks had this decision already made outside the meeting. That's open minisec violation. Can't really do that, but you do anyway. So by, just by doing it, see, this is the way I learned it, actually I learned it from the city commissioner a long ago. He said, well, we agreed to it just by doing it, just because moving forward with the agenda, by moving forward with the breach, you've agreed to it. Sidebar, little agreement. Please, the point of order, this is going to start it over because every agenda, every agenda item's supposed to be a question, a yes or no question. The mayor has a legal duty and responsibility to entertain a motion to approve the next agenda item when it comes up on the agenda. That's the rules. But the current practice, you see, you get to practice, and it's everybody's just kind of, you know, winging it, and, you know, and like the motion was even, the motion wasn't to approve the, to approve it, it was approve the recommendation of the staff. So you assigned it the debate, and they gave their recommendation, they defended their position in the debate, that's all they needed to do to get it to pass. Why? Because you did all the debate before you had the motion, direct violation of the rules. And in closing, I'd just like to, I guess why I came here in the first place, driving through the park today, I noticed you could correct another wrong from the past and clean up Presque Isle. What is all this kindling? It's like a big forest fire waiting to happen there. It's like, you can't clean that up? And there's like trees over the trails, and at the top in the back, the parking lot on the left, top of the hill on the backside of the lake, there's literally a widow maker. I had to stop and tell those people, I said, you should probably move because that tree is right at the top of your car. They were sitting there talking, and they did, but, you know, I talked to some people out there, they didn't, I don't know if it ever got to you, but I can tell you right now, if that falls and creates a widow and you don't do anything, I, this is like negligence. I mean, literally, leaving you there to kill somebody.
That's three minutes.
So let's get, let's really get with this.
That's three minutes, sir.
Please get me a presentation on here, we can go through some of this.
Anyone else for public comment?
I'd be willing to help you, I've been here trying to help you for 15 minutes.
Excuse me, order in the room here. Anyone else for public comment?
Barb, outside. Can you hear me? 1324 North Front. I just want to thank the commission and the city manager and the assistant. I think you guys, you know, I really feel for you, and, you know, I personally, I got, I'm, you know, I agree with Margaret on most of her points, but, you know, honestly, I get so tired of listening to people and reading Facebook posts about, oh, man, the city's, you know, charging for parking and they're not clearing the roads and, you know, I mean, and, you know, kudos to people that pay attention, and I'm really going to try to pay attention. It's so important that we, you know, we come into these meetings and we, you know, we look for the information and make sure that we know what's going on and, you know, not just get involved in, I like to call them barroom politics, you know, you know, you really got to do your, your research and, you know, get involved and pay attention, and thank you. That was tough. That's it.
I'm Cheryl Feldman, still at 1630 Center Street. You're my neighbor, and yes, I'm familiar with Robert's Rules of Order, but it is a living document, and sometimes we have to make adjustments along the way. That's all I'm going to say about that. The second point is, I think today, this evening, you did what had to be done. You're going to have a lot of taxpayers who are not pleased with this. This is a magnificent bedroom community, because we really don't have any industry, so we are a bedroom community. It's gorgeous, and we have to maintain that gorgeousness, and maybe down the road, we will come back and we will revisit this, and maybe we can tweak it, make it finer, better, but you are probably going to hear from a lot of residents who are not going to be happy, especially those who are retired. You know, I'm not thrilled, but I don't want to lose the beauty of the city. That was one of the reasons we moved up here. So I applaud what you, what you are doing, what you are trying to do. Brace yourself for the phone calls. That's it.
Anyone else for public comment?
Picking up where I left off the last meeting we had, I regret to inform the commission that the littering situation in Marquette is expanding beyond the merchant streets of Third Street and Front Street and downtown to the residential areas where I've been walking my dog. And if you say, why is this woman so upset about a few pieces of paper, we're talking broken glass twice in the same street on Pine Street. When I requested politely and professionally that you review your littering laws and increase the fines for throwing garbage from vehicles, I meant for the safety of the people and the animals who walk in the area. The first time, I get asked all the time if I pick up garbage, and I pick up cigarette butts, but the first time I found the glass, I walked by and had to clean out the sidewalk. The second time, somebody had pushed the glass into the gutter, but it still was there and it still was a danger. We've got the most dangerous holiday for the city and its animal population coming up. Now is the time, no matter how difficult it is, to let people know if you are observed throwing trash, especially any fireworks out of your vehicle, that you will be fined heavily, and there will be consequences to this because we have to protect our citizens from people who have no respect for the beauty and the safety of our reality. And in terms of Presque Isle, you should be looking into an area that is using, I'm not making this up, a herd of goats to remove the loose leaves in an area to reduce the fire risk. It's possible, it's out there, it costs money, but it's possible and it's out there. Back to politics. Now I'm going to talk about four years ago when we were trying to raise water rates and I was running for commission, and I made a promise that said if I was voted in, I would give up my salary in exchange for supporting the increase in water rates, and I meant it. I was not voted in. I am reiterating what I just said. You're going to take a lot of grief for this because you all wanted to be in this situation and you're in it. If you show the slightest amount of empathy for the people you're dealing with and give up your salaries for a year, then you have something to argue with other than words and platitudes, and words and platitudes are not going to be remembered, but it would be remembered if you gave your money back to the city to try to deal with some of this awful burden on people who cannot afford it. And on one final note, I'm running for a seat on the county commission this year. I'll be at the library Thursday at 6:00 PM. If any of you would like to see pictures of my dog and talk about the future of the county, which has a better fiscal situation than the city and has more resources to deal with it. Thank you for your time.
Can I take Jerry's three minutes?
No. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else?
Can I stand beside, behind this thing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Orville Dushno, 1802 Kimber, Marquette. Keep your salaries, you're earning it, believe me. For Mayor Pro Tems, I am a resident of the city of Marquette since 1965 and a taxpayer since 1966. You were not at the last meeting that I attended, so I figured I'd throw that in. Thank you for the service, Sergeant, appreciate it. I was at the last meeting, and I would encourage anybody else that's wondering what's going on in the city to attend the meetings. When I heard taxes are going to be raised and possibility of maybe some services not available anymore, that caught my attention, believe me. I've been retired for 25 years now, and my pension check is no larger now than it was when I retired, so I know what's going to happen, but I want the services, and I know I've got to pay for them. You know, every time we get company coming from relatives or friends, I have them come in and say, I want to show you my city. I do, I take them around, I show them Presque Isle, I show them all the beaches we have, I show them all the benefits we have to live in this great city of ours, and it costs money. You know, we're going to the grocery store now and, wow, I can't believe it. My wife says, I need more money for grocery bills, you know. So it's going to happen. I see I've got a minute left, so when we talked last time, we were talking about, we gave up 12, 12 to 14 million dollars on a hotel that's going to be built by the lake, and everybody's saying, we don't need any more hotels, okay, but let's do something with the property, let's get it on the tax rolls. We spent $300,000 on a house by the lakeshore, maybe it's time, you know, and I love the lakeshore, and that's one of the pluses in Marquette, but maybe it's time to look elsewhere. We've got a lot of property by the lake, and I know everybody loves it. In the morning, you can see a long line of cars coming in to Marquette. In the evening, you see a lot, a lot, a big line of cars going out, those are taxpayers. They could be taxpayers, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Geraldine Nalt, 1851 North McClellan. And I just want to say thank you to the commission and to the manager and assistant manager. I'm sure this was really difficult, and I guess if we want Marquette, we're just going to have to buckle our, buckle our belt and save where we can and do it. I also wanted to say thank you to Chief Grimm. I heard the announcement on the radio today that the no dog, no alcohol, no smoking on the beach would be enforced very strictly this year, and I was happy to see that. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing no further public comment, public comment is now closed. That brings us to comments from the commission. We'll start things off with Commissioner Hanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I would like to thank everyone for coming to a very difficult and heavy meeting, including all city staff that came here to support us. It really did make a difference to see you there and realize who you're making a decision that was going to directly affect. For those of you who are here and still have questions, I would encourage you to call or email. All of our emails and phone numbers are on the city website. I have spent the majority of the time in the last two weeks that I've had free time in talking to people about this direct issue, and I've learned one thing. From all the people that I sat down with and talked over why I was making the decision I was going to make, and why we had to as a city, or why I thought so, and what I wanted to do going forward, I only had one that still disagreed with me at the end of the conversation, and there were probably upwards of 50 that I talked to. I run a restaurant, I have a lot, I have access to quite a few people. The one thing that I do want to comment on, Orville made a kind of an inference to it, it is an income tax. I know it was mentioned very briefly in our thing, and it would take a vote, and it is something that takes a lot to set up, but it is something that I personally think we should have in the city. One of the main points that was made was that this kind of tax, increasing property taxes disproportionately affects our retired fixed income people, people that are living there that aren't on fixed income, and low income renters that don't make very much and their rents are increased. Doing an income tax opens us up to all of those commuters who drive into our city paying half of what we pay for an income tax. So say we had a 1% for city residents' income tax, it'd be half percent for people who live who live out, the hospital, northern, many other people. And then it splits it up, makes it a much more wide net that you're hitting and makes it that way. And I find that it helps to alleviate some of the pain that you get on the people that have no way of increasing that revenue that they have at their house. So for me, I think that if you would like to discuss this, I would love to. I'm not fully in how, the steps to take, that's why we have a little of the city manager and city staff that we do, but I would love to discuss the idea of possibly doing this with anyone who wanted to hear it. The other thing that I think I would love anyone to talk to me about is brownfields. They are very confusing. A lot of people are very misinformed about how brownfields work. And I find when it's laid out with exactly how it works, people are much more understanding of why we do them and why we use them as a revenue increaser. I try to say they're a very, they're a way that takes a lot of patience to make more money for the city, but the money comes. So if you'd like to talk about any of that, please call me or email me. I would love to meet with you at any point to discuss this. Thank you.
Portem Mayor?
Thank you. I would also like to acknowledge and thank everyone in the public that came here today. Even if not everyone spoke, I mean, we're all looking directly across from you right now. I mean, we can see what you're feeling and how you're reacting to everything that's being said. I wanted to talk a little bit about the income tax thing. Because I had the same exact thought regarding all the vehicles coming in and going out, depending on what time of the day it is. I would be very interested in still having that discussion at some point. I do want to make a comment earlier that I forgot to mention, the commitment that Commissioner Hanley made. You know, Commissioner Hanley, she's going to be up for reelection next year, as am I, and I would also like to make that same commitment to constantly keep evaluating this and bring it back down when we are capable of doing so. Thank you, everyone, again.
Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for coming. And I do want to say, I agree, it's not always easy to find information on the city website. And, and we're trying, but one of the positions that's not been filled the entire time, pretty much that I've been here, is, is a communications person. We have, instead, we have staff pushing to make sure that things get out, but we've actually left that position open. It's unfilled. So it is, the, I, government service, the majority of the back two rows of this room are full of people who are, do government service every day, and I think, and you deserve to be thanked every day. It's a, it's, it's, you are serving, and I am grateful, and we are all grateful, and I thank you. And we're here to make sure that you can continue to do that on this, on this table. But yeah, there's a position open that I think would have made it easier for you to find information. So I'm not, I don't disagree, but we are trying, and, and the bill itself is not going to be due until September. And, and yes, unfortunately, if, if folks do want to talk about payment plans, that is absolutely something to pursue. And, yeah, because before we had the electronic communications, we, there would have been paper, enormous amounts of paper. So things, you know, keep evolving on, on the communications, but that is certainly something I think that's on our radar about how to help improve that over time so that we can have, folks can feel like it's, they can be informed. I also want to say that, yeah, I've been on the commission for four years, and yeah, we dipped into the fund balance those, those years, and we were told that after four years, that was probably going to be a problem, there would be, that was, I can remember that being said, but, you know, it's, it's really about, you know, what question do you ask and what you pay attention to, and this, oh, we've balanced the budget, we've balanced the budget, we've balanced the budget. That's, that's the message, I think, that it's fair to say, that we heard as we were, you know, and, and figuring out how to maintain services. That's the other thing we heard, the maintaining of services. And, you know, taking ownership, that, that's, that's, you know, the votes that I made on those commissions. And now, you know, post-COVID, or post-shutdown and all that happened, we are having to reevaluate. And I look forward to working with everyone to reevaluate how we continue to have great services with the new potential. And, and there may be new revenues coming in. The state budget's actually not done yet. There may be things coming in the next, actually, three or four weeks that will hopefully help us if they, but as Commissioner Stonehouse said, there's also fundamental in decisions that have been made about what we tax and don't tax that maybe we need to think about at a state level so that we can fix some of these problems. Thank you very much to everyone.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess to parrot Commissioner Hill a little bit, boy, I wish that Lansing would do something for cities in this state instead of nothing, nothing for at least the last ten years. It is an abysmal situation that we have, and I'm not pointing out our local reps, though they're working their, their tail off for us, but from the, from the leadership side, whether you're Republican or Democrat in the House in Lansing, it's just not happening, and the Michigan cities are across the board suffering. Putting that in perspective, according to the Michigan Municipal League, in the last twelve years, the state of Michigan, the legislature has shorted its cities by something like twelve billion dollars. Billion, billion, that should have been distributed to Michigan cities is sitting on and retained by the state government in Lansing. So we have challenges to try and make all that work. But we've done, we've done an awful lot of talking tonight, and I think it's probably best for me just to say thank you for being here. Thanks to city staff for being here, particularly with our citizens and people that got up and, and talked to us a little bit and told us what they, what they were thinking. And I will leave you just with this, like my other commissioners, I've had an awful lot of people that have called me and contacted me, and probably about half said it's a good thing, do it. We need to do it, do it, was the message that came through very loud and clear from more people than I would have suspected. So I think the city fully realizes the value of what the city government is providing, what the, Marquette, if you will, and Marquette is really less an actual position now, I think, in many people's minds than it is just an idea. You know, you don't say you're from Marquette County, you just say you're from Marquette. But again, Your Honor, thank you.
Commissioner Banzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I would, I would echo what Commissioner Stonehouse said, both about the state shorting local government, tying local government's hands. This is the sort of thing that happens when that goes on for years and years, basically to keep special interests and lobbyists happy. But beyond that, I also had many folks reach out to me, and I just wanted to thank everybody who did reach out to share their opinion or to ask questions, or, you know, just to kind of see what was going on over the last few months, weeks, we've been talking about this, and also to everybody that showed up to the meeting tonight. If you want more information, I would really encourage everybody to go to the city website. If you just scroll down a little bit on the homepage, marquettemi.gov, on the left side, you'll see a link where you can find a lot more information about this operating mileage increase, how it works, what it's going to look like, how you can get some assistance or some help from the city if you need it. I also made a post about this recently and trying to explain some of my thoughts on it, and that's available on my website and on my Facebook page. And I would just echo what Commissioner Hanley said, that please reach out. If you have questions or concerns about this or about any other issue in the city, I'm always happy to take your phone call, always happy to respond to your email or your Facebook message. I post public explanations of every single vote that I take on this commission. I hold office hours on Facebook Live every two weeks and just kind of answer people's questions. I think there's been some good things that have come out of that. And I just want you to know that I'm here, and also our city staff are here to help you out if this is something that's going to have a tough impact on you. So with that, I think that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes. Over the past several weeks and often throughout this past year, we have all gotten a lot of messages, emails, phone calls, conversations in our daily lives about, about the city budget, and every single one of those conversations or communications is very, very much appreciated. You know, I think we're all pretty responsive to those, and we really appreciate any thoughts and ideas that people have. I think one of the things that happened tonight during the presentation is, is we all understood once again how complex our city budget is and the restrictions that we have and how difficult of a decision this is. So thank you for hanging in there with us. Thank you to those who are here. It's really good to see a lot of city staff here. Some of you are coming quite regularly, and I think you ought to be more involved. But please do, to everyone, please keep communicating with us, and this is an area that we spend a lot of time and appreciate. The more we hear from you, the more we learn from you, and the more you learn from us, and we're all better off for it. And then with that, I want to talk, just real, not even talk, just mention that this is Art Week, and we talk a lot about what, the values that we hold in Marquette and the, the opportunities we have, so get out there, enjoy Art Week. You missed Monday, you probably almost missed Tuesday, but there's still the rest of this week to go. Thank you.
I'm going to piggyback off Commissioner Davis. I know we've got our arts and culture manager, Tina, here. There is, I'm going to look for her head nod, but there's an event that started right at seven thirty at South Beach that is an indigenous band with, I think, some dancing even. So I was going to maybe take a drive down there if I get out of here early enough to kind of overlook down the windows and listen to that, but South Beach, it'll go on until about nine o'clock, I believe, tonight. And you can go on the city arts and culture website and look at each date. I was at Prescott Isle last night, great events. Thank you, Sally, or Commissioner Davis, for that reminder. So I think everything that I would have said has already been covered. I don't want to take away from the gravity of the situation. I know this was difficult. I know we've still got more work ahead. I echo Commissioner Hanley's promise to continue to look at this annually, if not more often than that, because we continue to look at these things as budget issues and items come up. I think we're committed to that, that promise. This isn't the only thing that we're going to have to be looking at, so you have my promise that we're continuing to work on this problem, and we will lower it as soon as we possibly can. I may not be on the commission at that point, and I'm term limited here in a couple of years, but I know there are some in this commission who still could be. The only other point I wanted to make, and I'm just going to say this briefly because I don't want to take away from the main point, in our rules of procedure, Section Five, Discussion and Voting, it is clearly stated that we do not have to follow strictly the Robert's Rules of Order, and that the mayor has the authority to run the meeting, and any commissioner may challenge a decision I make, and I did not hear any such challenge. This will not be brought up again unless the commission chooses to do so.
Point of order, please?
No. All right. So that brings us to comments from our city manager. Thank you.
I just want to touch on a topic that a couple commissioners have mentioned, and that is some of the reductions in state shared revenue payments that we, we have experienced over the years. And there is a resource out there that MML had been supporting and spearheading called the Save My City Initiative, and it has since paused since COVID, but in a rough calculation between two thousand and two and two thousand and seventeen, the city of Marquette has been essentially shorted eleven million dollars. And what has happened is those funds have been, that were allocated for, or should have been allocated for local municipalities, were re-diverted back to the state's budget because, well, they have a budget issue as well. The, the state is now sitting on a surplus or some extra funds that they are trying to decide what's happening, and there are some local efforts or regional efforts to really fight for the UP, for a regional transformation fund. And while that doesn't mean there is, all of that money would come to the city of Marquette, but that would actually essentially be a resource financially for us to tap into or direct economic development efforts to. And that actually would have some, some impact on affordable housing. So if you do get the chance to, to bend the ear and, and really kind of get the attention of your state legislators, not just local ones, but even downstate as well, that is something that the UP is really trying to fight for, and that is an effort regionally. And you can find more information on that if you, if you'd like. But I did want to say, eleven point eight million dollars from two thousand and two to two thousand and seventeen, and that hasn't incorporated the last five years that we, we have been here. So with that, I, I do want to say that a year ago, the budget deficit was a surprise, and it was not something that I had initially found in my research before coming here. And it's, it's easily something that, I guess I didn't do my homework. It's easily something that make, that could, that feels awfully isolating and alone that we are in this situation alone from city staff, or at least from the city manager's office. However, that was not the case. This has been a collaborative effort to come up with these solutions between, you know, the staff at city manager's office and the commission, but also all of the staff that you see here today. And this is a huge show of support for the community, for the commission, and for, you know, department heads as well. So I want to thank everybody in this room, especially the commission, but also the staff and the residents that have been working and providing ideas. And by the way, Mayor Portem, your ideas are awfully creative, and I've never had anybody come up with them, and they're darn right good. Unfortunately, not legally allowable. Please continue those conversations and those creative thoughts. We are here for that. We, we want to be able to implement some of these, these creative solutions, and we are not in it alone, and you're not in it alone either. We are here to help, and we are here to listen, and you can call us, email us, visit us at open office hours. Stop me in aisle eight of the grocery store. And please, just open that communication, keep that open. No further comments.
Thank you.
We are adjourned at seven thirty-seven PM. Thanks, everyone.